And it's time to approve the minutes of any questions on that motion. All anybody motion that you know to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a light side, men stand and approve. Now we're on item number five, which is the state account address, which the chairman only does each February, and I'm pleased to be able to do that this morning. If I get coughed up a little bit, I have been struggling about eight days now with whatever it is we all want to take our turn of accounting, I'm sure with everybody, but just bear with me, but I think we'll be okay. Again, good morning, everyone. How many of us watched the Super Bowl last night? Quite a few of us. I think we had quite a few citizens from Nash and Edgcombe County very interested in that with Kansas City playing in it for, and actually winning it for 50-year project, quite frankly. And as you know, Carolina telephone started in Edgcombe County many, many years ago. We've had a lot of our citizens over the years, including my brother, Mr. Boone, to Kansas City, he's been there quite a while. But he was a very happy gentleman last night, and I'm sure each one of you have got friends that stayed in Kansas City, they went there with the phone a couple of years ago. So it was a kind of a whole event, Edgcombe County and Nash County, and very pleased it turned out like it did. But with that said, on behalf, and I appreciate the large crowd here this morning, I know you came to hear me give the state of the union address, and I appreciate that. But on behalf of the 44 members, I am very pleased to give an update on the Nash County at this point. Our commissioners are very proud of the Nash County. We're very proud of what we are able to do for the county and what the county has done in the time that we have served. We work together very well. I think this year, or in 2019 is what I'll be speaking about, has probably been a year in which we have worked together maybe better than we ever have. We've always worked together with them. But we've had a couple of challenges, and you know, when you have challenges as a board, that's when you really find out how you work together. The schools that we are dealing with now, building a new school, has been, as each one of you knows, a work in progress. And of course, the detention center has been introduced quite a bit, and we have worked through that as a board, have kind of focused and joined together on where we are, and are very proud to be able to provide Nash County as a board that works good together. We don't always agree, but as we work through our work sections, it works on the task at hand, we seem to always find a point where we can all buy into, and that's very important. It doesn't happen in Washington this day and time, as we know. We're sitting here, don't have a budget in, which affects many things, including a lot to do with our schools, as we know. But we went through our budget negotiations very quickly this year, simply because our staff does a great job in presenting budget, and we really didn't disagree on too many things in the budget, and I'll update you on some of that as we go along this morning. Administration helps a lot with the board working together. And our third floor here in this building, which we're on now, is where our administration is located. In 2019, we had four people over here on the left side, a manager, an assistant manager, the board clerk, and the many other things she does, which I won't name out here rest of today, but and a retail developer that we added in 2019. Just as a query for the board, Mr. Baelfield, of those four people, which one would you replace if you had a lot here?
Replace?
Yes, sir.
Of the top?
Of the top four people I just named, yes, sir.
Yeah. The manager.
That whole thing I'm saying.
If I understood your question right, you'd say which one would I personally replace?
Let me rephrase quick. Maybe I'll give you a dozen of that.
Well, if your question is, is it in our own staff that I won't replace, then I know.
That's the brick, that's the brick.
I thought you were made of rich women and I should replace.
Having authority to replace, I understand why you felt that way, but that's not true of what I'm saying.
I'll tell you why I felt that way, I believe I can handle it.
Do you believe?
I've been here 21 years as a county commissioner, I know the operation of the county.
Yes, sir.
And I believe I can step right in that job and...
Why did I start with you? I appreciate your comment. If there are any board members that have any members that they'd like replaced, I don't expect anyone to raise their hand.
And I don't need one.
I thank you so much. But we have a great administration. I don't know how we can do any better, quite frankly. They keep us very informed, they keep us with the information we need. And as you know, quite frankly, the biggest job of county commissioners is this budget right here. Each year, of course, this is a very condensed version of what the budget looks like, but there are some eight people that are in charge of this budget, making sure we adopt it, making sure we work within it. And it's the seven commissioners, and it's the manager. The board manager has a tough job, but really and truly, at the end of the day, the seven commissioners and managers are the ones that have to make all the decisions concerning budgets, and every other decision that we make in this county, the easy ones, which most of them are, and occasionally the hard ones, which we all know, show up from time to time. I'll move on to the department heads. I've said it before, our department heads in Nash County are a great group of people. I knew last year when I came in here how many total years of service we had, and it was a very large number, but we've only added, or had to replace one department head this year, if I'm not mistaken, and it was our person that's in charge of utilities and general engineering throughout the county, and we were able to get, as we all know, a gentleman, a gentleman to come on board. And I'm amazed that when we look at the person for retirement, or that choose to go somewhere else, which was the case here, the quality of people that we were able to find to go at their place. Mr. Boone has come in, and you know, it seems like he's been there a very long time. He works well with all the other department heads, I haven't ever asked him how he likes his job, but I think he would like it, say he likes his job. But department heads work so well together, and it just, it's a blessing to have the department heads that we have in Nash County. Now, we have an opening coming forward in 2020 that happened on Friday, Friday was the last day of the Valley Valley, it's sold the water, and I'm sure that we will also find a great replacement for her, even though it's going to be some tough shoes to fill, she's been with us for a very long time. Moving now from the department heads, just the employees of Nash County. We are very, very blessed to have the employees we have here. This board commissioners realize the quality of people we have, we try to look out the best we can, and it has not been as easy a few years back, but we have been able to catch up some, and we hope that we'll be able to continue to do things for our employees who live in the board. But I want to thank the ones that are here this morning, every one of you, for the job that you do on the afterboard. But most important thing for all of us is of course the citizens of Nash County. We realize the citizens are the ones that pay the bills, they pay the taxes, they buy things, which means they spend sales tax money, and we're just very blessed to have the 96, 97 thousand citizens that we have that just work with this board very well. We don't keep them all totally happy, but they're always positive, they always work with us, they try to understand when we can't do the things that they want to do, and we appreciate the board members cheering for all of the citizens at any time, and we do hear from quite a few of them. I'm going to move on to capital projects, which quite frankly is what I'm proudest of, and I think the rest of our board will be proud of, but of course, been in the construction industry, that's where my understanding is, that's where I like to work in. And capital projects in Nash County, we have just accomplished a great deal in the last three, four years. This past year, I want to give you the projects that we were able to complete. Out of Lockman Hills and Airport, for those that visit Airport sometime, they be coming in, because we have a thought to do, and put a credit on our summer budget in the project, as well as the other departments that we have. We completed the airport research, research in on the runway, very large project, very expensive project, but it was done, we had to close Airport for a while without any hiccups at all. Our accident renovation down the street here, we know last year we rented this issue, and we worked, got the work on, and we did have our people out there for a number of months, of course, our farmers were on us to get it done, and get out of the way, get our people back in there, as well as the staff, but we do now have it open. I think it's a big improvement, and air quality is certainly a big improvement. If you haven't been down there, I would advise you to visit Ag Center as soon as you can. Early College on the campus, so Nash Community College was completed and opened in January, students came back. The Nash, Southern Nash Seaford Center was opened in March, for those of you that do not live in the county, please go down there sometime and just walk through, staff down there will be very proud to show you that, and the board is very proud that we were able to do that, we have a product on the highway. The radio project, which was a big project, expensive project for Nash County, we completed, we put it in line, put on service in May of 2019, and that was going to all Viper-type systems throughout the county for our people. The C and D landfill addition was put in service in 2019, we were almost out of landfill area for our C and D construction debris, so we did get that completed. And we completed two of our stream projects, cleaning our streams out, Commissioner Outlaw appreciates you bringing that out of kitchen several years ago, after the last storm, when we got to get the, what you've pledged to citizens that were having flooding, and really didn't understand why it was. And the Tar River and Stony Creek, the debris project has since been completed, and with grant money, I might say. And then, of course, in this room, we have completed the video system, the do, everything in here is viewed as part of collecting video, which has allowed us to now go live if I was, I was one that hopefully able to use this system this morning to do this address, but I kind of put things off on purpose, but I stayed pretty busy, I'm always at the last minute getting things done, and I kind of wanted to use this to make some of the presentation this morning, and I realized the deadline was coming up, and I had to have to the staff know later that on Friday to be able to utilize that, I just didn't think I could make it, but I went to Stacy and started a question about if I could complete it over the weekend, and she didn't even let me finish, she just smiled, quite frankly. So I figured out pretty quickly the deadline wasn't the deadline, and I did it on Friday, but I do intend to use it next year, and make it a little bit more interesting, me standing up here just talking. County projects that are now funded and underway, quite a few again, out of the airport again, we have key hangar, if you go by 97, you see those being constructed, something that we've needed for a very long time, for small plane owners in Nash County to be able to store airplanes here in Nash County, and of course, we likely stored it in Nash County, because that puts an amount of tax flow for that airplane, we're not paying, they're not paying their taxes to another county. We also have under construction, or we will have, all this will be completed by early summer, I'm told, there's a new fuel cell farm out there as well. Elm Street Drainage, which is a project that actually cuts off the back of our parking lot, we've had a lot of issues out there that will get started near 2020, but the engineering has been done, and it will be taken pretty soon on that. One of the projects that all of us are very proud of is the Nash County Miracle Park Coopers. We've been working on that for a while, and also, we're about 80% through with that project. And mostly what we like to have are buildings, which the county is kind of looking out to get those done, and when the county looks out for a building, it involves me quite a bit, and that's just something I got to get on it, Mr. Boone and I have got to get those built, but I promise you, we'll be on that very shortly. That is a park, I really wish you could go by and look at, we haven't hooked it up yet, because when you build a new park, of course, you got to have some time to get the standing grass that you need prior to hooking up the park, and that's the process we're in right now. But there are a lot of oil fields out there, very similar to the Red Oak Park, but the energy that makes it different from the rest of them that we have is the playground, it is an all inclusive playground, playground, and we will be able to get grass retrieved and help us with that, no matter what your kid has, or what kind of challenges they have, I think they'll find something that they can utilize at this point, and hopefully we'll have it open sometime in early summer, what we hope to, depend on how the season is for growing grass. Northern Ash Works is a project that this board also is very proud of, and Ms. Richardson and I are especially proud of, because it is in our district, and we've worked on it a long time, but if you go out in that area, which is the Dorchester River area, you can go see water lines going in everywhere. And this morning, as a matter of fact, I had the biggest crane I've ever seen, the biggest one he had, I think, set up at giving a new bubble school to put the dome on the tank. I should be a little bit late, I get fascinated when I see a crane set up, and I hope to get out of here in time and go back to see a lift that's part of the truck up there. So you have a water system that goes into service about a part of a year, part of it will be in pretty soon, quite frankly, into service, but we've got a lot of citizens in that part of the county that need public water, and we were able to put funds together through grants and through loans to get that going, and it's just an exciting time, of course. Mr. Boone came in just in time to help us finalize that project, get it out to him, and glad he's here with his staff to look after. Little Stakes Water Sewer Tank and Roadway, this is down in our Little Stakes Park. We have got a shell building there, we've got a road there, access road only, but now we're getting ready to let bids, I believe, Thursday this week, or the next day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, so we'll be opening bids for the water sewer, the tank down there, as well as the roadway, and that is also an exciting time, that will complete that industrial park and certainly make it available for us to recruit industries to that area, and hopefully be able to put shell buildings out and shell building like we did Gulfport. Broadband, very, very important product for the county. We're pleased to say we have completed phase one, we're, well, that's the contract for phase two, and it is underway, and there's one more phase left, but when we get to the end of this process, we'll have high-speed internet available to 90-plus percent of the citizens in Nash County, who solely need, even more needed than what it was when we started this project at least five years ago, I would think, but they who have led the effort to get this underway. But we've got so many people that work from home now, it is actually costing our Little State Industry, when people realize, maybe some parts of the county do not have it, that they have to sell their homes there, particularly, you know, our future in Nash County is people coming out of Wake County, finding they a little less expensive home to live in, even though it's a very quality home, but you must have internet when those people come out of Wake County, because a lot of them do indeed work from home, as well as, of course, our kids need it as well, they have it at school, they have homework to do, and they have to go sit in a parking lot at school, you need homework, and you may well know about that, I don't know, you used to have it here in Nashville, maybe, but it is an exciting project, and I'll be tip of the dead to see it come underway as well. I mentioned the Northern Ash Elementary School, that we are underway with, we got funded for that, as you know, by reading the news lately, the school board has decided to close three elementary schools, and they voted to do that. Apparently, I haven't, we haven't been notified officially of this, but what I read in the paper, that our press upfront provided for us last week, evidently they're real close to deciding to put schools at the existing Red Oak Elementary site. I think they actually may be voting on that tonight, if I don't know the right, I think the committee has voted to do that. So we are making some progress with that, and I assure you, our boards, even though we've had a little issue getting this thing started, because this board is so, I guess, intense and so much devoted to building this project within the budget that we have, that we just want them to agree to let us help them keep the project in budget, it is all we want to do, and we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks, to try to get a agreement, which we both have been working on to do that. We've also got funded, and we will be doing another debris, thank the fact of underway, remove the project in Turkey Creek, and then, of course, we've got ongoing work at our detention center here in Nash County. And I'm not going to say a lot about that, because Mr. Boone is going back to present it, as soon as I sit down about that, as far as facilities, and then, of course, Sheriff Office is going to be making a presentation on the operations of the detention center office, I'll leave that to the guys to know more about it tonight. Capital projects coming up for 2020 and moving into the years beyond that is, we're still looking to build a new solid waste convenience center in District 5, we have not potted that yet, we're talking about location, it did not work out, but I hope we will see that done near 2020. It's an area that if you look at it on the map, we've got, we can leave it soon, but we've just got one big hole in District 5, and Mr. Outlaw, I think you will get that thing done with. It's just difficult to locate a convenience center that satisfies everyone that you can imagine. You have a shelter that's been on capital plan for quite a while, I hope we'll pick that location, decide how we're going to do it, look forward with that near 2020 also. Farmers Market, parking lot expansion, we do need more parking, Farmers Market, but land remind me, I did have a conversation with Captain Brock at a meeting last week, and he has agreed to let us have a lot that we wanted to get, so we're going to talk about that, so I think we're at a point where we can move forward with that also. We need a new health department, Mr. Hill, I'm not sure whether you're here now, he made us think so, because he looked like he spent money, but we do need a new health department, we'll be working on that, which we've got a building that we really want to put the health department in, out around the hospital, and we've got a few legal issues there, and court ownership in Edgcombe County, and we're working on, purposes to their part out, but I hope in 2020 is the year we can actually make that move also. Phase three of the county-wide internet system, the county has also agreed to fund, once we finish two, we'll move right into through. And then, of course, as we all know, a potential expansion at the Nash County Detention Center, and I'm sure we will make the decisions very soon, after we get our report back from most company on how we can go about that, so if you will stand by, I think we'll see that come up in 2020. All these capital projects moving on certainly have to be funded, and that's where this board and the staff, particularly the manager's staff, is proud of, I'll find that to contribute to Nash County. Our tax rate, if y'all get tired of hearing me say this, but this board is very proud of, is 67 cents, this is about 10th year it has been that, and as I would go, you keep it at that for 10 more years, if at all possible we can do. I don't think you'll have another county in the state, I have researched this, but we'll be able to say, particularly accomplished projects that we have, and that have to keep the tax rate consistent for 10 years in a row. Our fund balance at the end of 2019 was $43,408,000. That is an increase of $630,000 over 2018. And it does amaze me that we can continue to spend money on all these capital projects, and yet still grow our fund balance. Of course, we do that by the increase in total assessed value in the county. We are growing some, it's not at a rapid pace, we're not in Wake County, we're not in MacArthur County, but certainly after getting out of rebounds, we all were so nervous of, it is a real blessing that we are indeed increasing the population, as well as total assessed value, and we are building residential houses in the county at a rate that I haven't seen, I don't know if we've ever had, quite frankly, but I look every month exactly how many new house permits that we're issuing, and a lot of them are indeed, you can tell by the location, or people coming out of Wake County. We have an unsigned fund balance of $47 billion. People sometimes think that is a little high, and I assure you that it really is not high. If we have a test, like we had in Florida in 99, it will take majority of that money to get through, and that's why we're so protected by our unsigned fund balance, what the state calls a rainy day fund, I guess you would say, but back in Florida, I think if I remember right, we spent about 67% of our unsigned fund balance at that time. Of course, you do get some part out of the pack, but you got to have the money available at the time that you need, because it's simple, you would need collection rate, very important, and I've got a five-year chart up here, and it keeps going up every year. Mr. Lamb, I appreciate that being full focus, we got here five years ago, and this past year is 98.85%. That is an amazing number, and out of all the tax bills we send out, that this staff and labor collect, 98.85% of that money. That has grown quite a few percentage points since I've been in the business, but you know, that helps to keep that tax rate down, and if you keep tax rate down and collect the money if you're old, you can certainly continue to keep it down, and I will thank the tax office, as well as the administration, for continuing to grow that. I'm just wondering, how often do you collect a little over 100, Mr. Lamb, and you can't do that?
I don't know that in general, if we do that.
Okay, all right, let's go do that. But certainly we're going to reach 99 at some point, it looks like, we went from 98.73 to 98.85, it's creeping up. But I think what this board is most proud of is the balance in the expenditures that we do in Nash County. It's unusual to have the balance that we got, and I pointed this out last year, last year 27% of our budget went to schools, this year it remained 27% went to school. Public safety last year, which is included the sheriff's department, as well as EMS, was 25%. This year, public safety has increased to 26.24% of our budget is spent on public safety. Social services or human services, as we call them, last year was 26%, and it went down to 24.37%. I attribute that to the improvement in the economy, I'm sure which what that is, but you'll notice every bit of what we save in that particular section went back into public safety, not in anything else, so you've got a 27, 26.24, and a 24.37% for your largest item that you have in any county budget. That mixture for a number freak like I am is unusual in North Carolina, particularly eastern North Carolina, you would see a lot less spent on public safety, and a lot more spent on social services, human services. Government itself, general government is at 10%, that's a pretty low number, but debt service is what's really important. Our debt service, with all we do, is still 6.96%, well, you understand debt service and the rest of government, that's a very large, a very small number that we should be very proud of. I'm going to move along quickly now, if I could, and just hit some other highlights of Ms. Lane's items, as I recall. During this year, we'll be holding our 12th citizen campaign, appreciate looking to see if she's in here, always scheduled that volunteer that she has, has been a great asset to our citizens. I've never heard anything that's possible for people to go through that, and if you haven't been through it yourself in Nash County, I certainly would invite you to do that. I actually think that Lamb may get started by, for that one, and you have the pleasure, if you will attend tonight, to have Mr. Lamb on the program tonight. We had a very successful United Way campaign this year, United Way campaign, of course, we drew it by like four loaves, and their willingness to give to other people, it's our most successful campaign to date, and I appreciate the staff working on that, and I certainly appreciate every employee that gave you that campaign. When you are an employee or an employee of the government, you won't ever get rich, but you do live a decent life, and of course, you have a great retirement system, so if you're willing to help those that are less fortunate, I always think that would be a very blessed thing to do, if you feel good about it. We also during this year completed our move from the gateway partnership to our own department for industrial improvement and retail development, that was a step that we had thought about for a very long time, and we did complete that this year, and of course, we did it in 2019, but in 2020, we had our new recruiter country workforce, which is Andy Haggie, which I see, Andy, where are you at in the office? Appreciate you being here this morning, and look forward, and I'll tell you, Andy, I want what you have accomplished this year to be in this report, or for the chairman to have in this report. or for the chairman to have in this report next year. So and I'd like it to be almost the whole page if you could put that on the thing. But Andy is in the ground running and we very much look forward to working with him. We've got to prove that it was the right decision for this board to decide to do in-house as we did it many years ago. And we were also always very successful in North Carolina. So we look forward to that. And of course, Susan has been with us for a year or a little over a year, maybe eight to two years. Time flies, we get old, but she is doing a great job. And I would tell you, the job she has done has really helped our relationship with our small counties, small cities or towns throughout the county. I see you now sitting beside Mary Middlesex. She'll tell you, he'll say you've done a great job as well for Middlesex as well. But it is forming a relationship with the smaller towns that maybe we didn't have in the past, trying to help them recruit retail visits to their particular towns. And she does a great job of that and actually has something on our agenda today to take care of and that we've got. Our relationship with Trillium, our mental health provider, it's also proved this past year that we made the right decision there. We are still learning a lot in North Carolina about mental health, and we don't have it solved yet. There are a lot of moving parts and a lot of things that each one of these entities has to work out. But I very thankfully, we made that move and I think our board is very thankful that we did. We liked it when we had it ourselves for Nash County. That's a long time ago and it won't be like that anymore. But I do think we were with a great partner and they seem to look out for you very well. During this year, of course, since 2020, since this year, we have formed a complete town committee in Nash County that works very hard. And as you see these meetings, of course, it's very, very important to make sure that every person that lives in Nash County gets counted. We have a lot of things based on the population of the county. So as you get a chance to help with that process, identify all of our people and all get them on the list, we very much appreciate that as I know that it means working very hard. Last month, as you know, we gave out longevity service awards again. And quite frankly, to our board, that is one of the things we enjoy with both of you is to give out awards and pins for our employees that have been with us a very long time. Last week or last January, a month ago, we gave 15 employees a 20-year service award, eight employees 25 years, three employees 30 years, and one employee 35 years service award. And that list comes up every year, about that same number of people. That is a total of 625 years of service in Nash County. Last year was 705 years of service in Nash County. So again, we have a good place to work in Nash County apparently, and we certainly have the backup to show that our employees for the most part serve a number of years with us and we greatly appreciate that. And I feel like the little ceremony we do is probably really underserved those people, but we're very thankful that each one of them have been here that long and hope they'll complete their commitment here in Nash County. We also had two employees in our EMS department recognized back a little earlier, this kind of lady in 2019, that had 50 years of service each in that field. A lot of the time was with Nash County because they both came from Stony Creek and some of the time was there before we incorporated Stony Creek into that. But to have two employees that were still working, that were still working to have 50 years of service in that kind of field, a very difficult field, is truly amazing to me. Of course, that's Ricky Turner, please. Some of the many awards, just a few of the many awards, because I've posted all the awards that were received in Nash County, our employees received, I again would be here for quite a while. There are a couple of them I want to mention. Our Nash County Senior Services Supervisor Morgan Dowdy was named in 2019 Senior Health Insurance Information Program, which is SHIP statewide coordinator of the year for North Carolina. We were very proud of that, the woman that she got. Moving on, Nash County Emergency Services Assistant Director of Emergency Management and Fire Rescue Division, Brent Fisher was elected president of the NC Emergencies Management Association in November of 19 at their fall conference in Wilmington. Our Nash County EMS is also recognized by the 2019 American Heart Association's mission, Lightline Gold Plus. The recognition is designed to showcase emergency medical organizations across the nation that are providing excellent heart attack, cardiac arrest, and stroke care. Very important things to the seniors, and if you look at this board up here, very important to us as well. We are indeed an age board, must lay down the arms and all that. But we greatly appreciate knowing that our EMS department has been recognized statewide for a couple of things, and one of them, of course, is heart attacks, cardiac arrest, stroke care. At our North Carolina Association of Conservation District Annual Conference, which was held in January of 20, but as related to 2019, Nash Silverwater was awarded the Conservation District of the Year. That is a very hard award to get as well because there are 100 counties in this state. Of course, they, I understand Valley told them there were 96 different sort of conservation districts that were there, one in two several counties other than Old Eastern Park in 2001. But that white red Conservation District of the Year presented to Nash Silverwater Conservation District in recognition of their outstanding conservation efforts for the benefits of the citizens of our natural resources. Also during this year, we worked with the town of Ashland in working out an agreement where we would take over their athletics or not really take over, we're doing it jointly, but we will be assuming that athletic department under their recreation, we'll be looking after the athletic part moving forward in our Nash Recreation, that includes Clubber Park. That's been a work, a project that we've worked on for quite a while. And of course, it took a lot of, you can imagine, a town, imagine I see you smiling, working through the difficulty of letting another entity run the athletics in Charles, in August, the way of Charles Taylor. But we're just beginning that process, and I think when we get to the end of December, we'll realize that we all agreed to do the same thing. If not, just an annual contract, we can go back just like we were. But I appreciate all of you that worked on that particular project. It will help Nashville citizens and they have a lot more participation in their athletic leagues to help Nash County as well because we'll have a lot more participating in all of these. And of course, it should always be some savings as you combine different entities. It certainly is apparently in business anyway. But I promise you that our staff, just know what I like to do, will work very hard to make that work. Our grants that I spoke about last year are, last year, of course, we got $18 million worth of grants. In 2017, we got $10 million worth of grants. When you get those grants, you've got to go get it done. So we, I guess, had to slow up a little bit on grants this year. We still got about 1.7 billion, it looks like, in housing type grants, but we really are pausing a little bit to complete some of the projects that we've got underway because a grant agency, when you go back to them to ask for more money for anything, they want to know if you're through with what we gave you last time. So we've been so successful the last two years and actually, again, I can't spot you here, but if you hear this board, I appreciate you, the job that you do in administering these grants, applying for them. And what I hear from the people that I run into that award these grants is how good of a job Nash County does in administering grants and keeping the paper going. So we will, of course, finish these projects, $28 million worth that we've got, grant money to do, and then we'll start the cycle back over again because we have a lot of capital projects that we want to do moving forward. Of course, that's the good stuff in Nash County, and it's not all of it by any means. The challenges that I see for 2020 are really not a long list, but number one, schools. We've got to do what we can to improve our education, public education in Nash County. Our board is funding the school system at a level that I think we can always get, put more money in schools, but as we move forward with additional funds, we want to do it in such a manner that goes to our teachers. We are interested in salary supplements is what we would be most interested in. And then of course, completing schools we've got underway or just hopefully will be starting through soon. We are willing to work with our school board in any way we can, and we have put forth a lot of effort this year. It's gotten better than what it was two or three years ago, but we've still got a long way to go. We're in an area there where everybody's very protective of their turf, and we are very protective of the taxpayers' budget on our side. Believe me, we know the citizens expect us to work together. And our board and our certainly its chair, work with that chair to do everything we can to keep things moving and not have little stalemates. Kind of like we're relaunching this list, but I think in the next couple of weeks, you'll see us work through the funding issue for schools and hopefully get it started. Industrial recruitment, Andy, as I said, is a big item for Nash County. We have had a fairly good year this year. We've had a few industries that we brought in, we've done real well in the retail part of it. But I hope this year, next year, moving forward, it's a better year, of course, and I'm sure this board is willing to look at anything that we can do to bring more jobs to Nash County. Because that's what really keeps your economy moving forward. And I just hope we have a better year in that respect. Of course, having a new person in, it's going to take a while to get wrapped up and to get the contacts that you need to make and so forth. But anything you need on this board, we're certainly willing to be here and provide for you. And then of course, the last item that we have as a challenge is our detention center. We recognize that there are issues in detention centers, we are addressing those. And again, I'm not going to say a lot about that, but Mr. Boone is going to be right behind me and he's going to frame you up to date where we are. We had on January the 24th, we had Mr. Lewis in again to do an inspection on Health and Human Services. He is the lead, he's open to all inspectors for details in his state, and he came down himself and we threw it with us again. He seemed to be very pleased that day with where we are, made a lot of very positive comments. So with that said, again, I appreciate the board and the way that we've worked together, and I certainly appreciate all the staff in Nash County. With that said, I will move on with the agenda, any commission, which may be accomplished, feel free to ask.
You say it, sir.
Thanks, sir. We're now at 8:06, which is a report on the detention center and first quarter facility that we de-lap up and I would call on the top of the booth to make that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to present to the board again today. You were having a presentation update you on our progress at the detention facility by just last month, and we were receiving these updates on a monthly basis as we consider its future. I'm happy to report that we have made the regular progress, continue to make the regular progress at the detention facility. But we will remind you, or certainly will give credit where credit is due, that is due to the hard work of our facility maintenance staff, a number of contractors, certainly the support we receive from this board, and the level of cooperation we need to see from the Nash County Sheriff's Office and from our fire marshal club. So I certainly want to make sure or recognize each of those individuals because much of what I intend to share with you today is not to be realized without your support and their contribution. I'd also like to recognize our assistant county man, if that would have been before, I'd be able to advance my slide. And I'm going backwards here. All right, so the first thing I want to touch on as part of my presentation, I will say I'm trying to move much quicker than I did during my last report, because I'm ready to kind of talk about the jail back in January. And I'm going to try to keep my comments for 30 minutes or less today, just going to try to move quickly, but certainly having flesh and to the good stuff. As far as my report, I recall really what precipitated these reports was two letters that we received from the Department of Health and Human Services back in February, December 18th. And you recall we received a letter at that time and requested or directed the handling to remove inmates from the facility. This is that letter received on the 18th. And if you recall, there were 25 action items in that letter. 15 of those were deemed to be urgent or immediate items that needed to be taken care of as quickly as human possible. And then there were 10 that the county was directed to address within the next 30 days. Of those urgent items, 15 urgent items all related to facility maintenance, you recall from my report last month, each of those items have been addressed. In the second list of items, there's 10 items who would be addressed within 30 days. Four of those items were related directly to facilities, and then two of those items had some joint responsibility between facility maintenance and detention facility. Again, I would touch on those. So again, the immediate items, there were four items, you will see, check inside each of those. First item, one smoke evacuation system. We had the system inspected within three days. There were several smoke detectors in the facility, item six that had been damaged by inmates that needed to be replaced. We attached that item as a known item to staff, and then we were working on securing the materials to replace those items that were already in the works before we received the letter. Unfortunately, they weren't able to actually receive those units that same week and replace those the following Monday, the 23rd. Item 10 was a couple of exit signs, also did damage to the facility. Those were placed the next day on the 19th. And then the final item, item 4, related to fire panel, again, Department of Health and Human Services was a inspection by third party, and that item was completed within three days. Actually, we had a contractor coming on Saturday to complete that inspection and assistance package at that time. So again, those were items completed. The longest item within five days of receiving that letter. So those all have been addressed. The next set of items, again, the item would be addressed within 30 days, and there were , there were all four of those items that related specifically to the facilities and two items that had some joint responsibility between the facilities and the sheriff's office. Two of those, actually, three of those have been completed. Item one, the electrical conduit, there's some items that the inspector was concerned about on the roof of the jail. Those items have been addressed. That's the pictures of that. Item eight, showers, typically custodial work is handled by staff and inmates in the facility. One of those cleaned and painted, that was a short timeframe, and actually we ended up handling all of that through facility maintenance and outside contractor. Item nine, plumbing fixtures, it's been an ongoing item in the facility, but the inspector wanted, there's an item we did working on. That work has been completed. Item two, the shared item, that's what I see, green power strips overloaded, maintenance control room. I believe that work has been, that was a shared item. Facility maintenance portion was completed the next day, the 19th. And finally, four items, item 10, that's an item that was put on hold, that's in the upper section of the jail, but in the linear section, constructed in 1977. That area is currently unpopulated, but none of the near-term plans will repopulate that area, so we have put, we have put that item on hold. In terms of items that need to be addressed, we have addressed all of them, I'm happy to report. You will see item five, that is an item that is pending. We had to have an outside contractor do that for it. Those were new smoke detectors that the state has requested be added to the system. Those are not replacements, they're new addition. And we have issued a purchase order to Johnson Controls for that work, it was issued back in September, January, and we're waiting for them to receive them too, and schedule them to come in and start. them to receive them too, and schedule them to come in and install in the facility. Moving forward, I would just like to revisit the items that will improve the net by paying for the budget, this is the slide you may have all seen last month. First is $550,000 that were allocated for repairs and improvements at the jail. Second item, plumbing improvements in the north south block, again, this was on the older portion of the jail, constructed in 1977, in the amount of roughly $112,000. And then moderate part of the elevator, the solid elevator in the sheriff's department, which has got some age on it, in the amount of $130,000. Regarding the $550,000 that were allocated for improvements, in the manner of all seeing this slide or portion of this slide of last month, I've included the numbers from my January report and an update of where we stood after this past Friday. And what you will see there is I've tended to break the expenses down in various areas, but don't go into the hard and fast, the lines are a little blurred when doing renovation, client items and items cited during the state semi annual inspection. But what I really draw your attention to is since my last report in January, we had paid out an initial $23,515 total of, that was, we had $159,864.38 spent to date. We have committed a total of $382,346.36 out of the increase of roughly $170,000 from our report in January, although we'll say some of those items were already underway, we had just yet issued a purchase order. And then to date, we have committed, the county has committed or spent $542,210.74, that is an increase, and run numbers are roughly $200,000 over what we shared back in January. So we are moving at a quick pace, there's a lot of work underway, and I'll share some photos with you today, of work that has been done since my last report, but we are working feverishly to make the repairs so that we can bring our inmates back to Nash County. Since my last report in January, we have focused our efforts on six primary areas, and again, I'll share some of the progress in those areas with you today for each of these items. First, we've been focused on renovation in doors four and five, and those were the doors that were ahead on the west side of the facility back in the early 90s. Second item, repainting plumbing and some other miscellaneous items in doors one, two, and three, and those doors have constructed in the late 90s, actually about the same time as the administration building here was constructed. Third item, repainting and plumbing in the lockdown dorm of the former female dorm. Fourth item, upgrades to isolate yourselves one and two, that's on the west side of the facility that actually dated back to the late 70s. Some additional offensive reinforcement, that has been an item that received a lot of attention. We have to report some additional progress on that item with you today, and then some other miscellaneous items. Again, first item, doors four and five, you will see some of the full photos here. Each of those doors prior to the work of renovation included 14 bunks for 28 beds, and even those were constructed in the early 90s. My mask is working here, so you'll see this is the lower level here, this is door four. We're actually already working with staff at the detention center to remove the beds in anticipation of quickly repainting the interior of those doors, and that's with the walls, ceilings, floors, beds, doors, everything inside of that dorm. Also some renovations to the shower, and this was on the fourth, it's sunblock construction, stainless steel panels that have been added, and we need to do some work here, so we're also focused in that area. Here's some after photos here, you'll see the dorm, the beds, or at least that portion of the beds have been replaced, and initially, I mentioned there were 14 bunks in these, each dorm, and we have, in the assistance of the sheriff's office, they're addressing, we've reinstated nine of those, ample population of 18, or about 18 beds, you'll see that there, and then you can see the floors have been repainted with epoxy, walls, bunks, everything in the dorm has been repainted, with the exception of the grated steps here from the first and second floor, the medum in that dorm. Here's a photo here of the door, one of the two doors. So all that work has been done and mounted. We also focused on the addition of partitions between the fixtures in each of the dorms, you can see that here, that was added, that work has been completed. And we also focused on the shower, I mentioned that, it's two photos here showing that work, that was concerned about some pine wood in the rear of the shower, so we added some tile there, added a level edge, put wood back to the front, and then we repainted the floor with epoxy, and we've gone through all the plumbing fixtures and actually replaced quite a few of the valves and the plumbing change between these two dorms in anticipation of a complete rebuild of the plumbing. Now looking to change out the fixtures, other than the urinal in each dorm, and as we understand, the sheriff's office is contemplating putting females back in these dorms, so we intend to change that fixture out with a, with a remote in each dorm, and that item has been ordered. In addition to the dorms themselves, we repainted the bullpen outside each of those dorms, you can see that here in this photo, and then the floors, walls, ceiling, all trimmed. Also, there were pass-through doors that could be used if the detention officer needed to either place handcuffs on inmate before removing them from the cell, or if they needed to pass foot trays into each of those dorms. So each of those items have been replaced, and that's what you'll see here, although it's in closed position. Then the hallways outside the dorm, we also have repainted everything here, floors, walls, and ceiling. Second item, we continued our efforts, turning our attention to doors one, two, and three, this is a photo here, I've got an asterisk inside the full photo, because this was a photo taken after work that was done this summer with the assistance of the inmates. So this is how the, is a picture that is indicative of the condition of the dorm made earlier part of 2019, certainly before we began work within the past 30 days. But you will see at that time, it will repaint, bunks, used to be double bunks, and at the request and actually with staff direction, have the ten facilities bumped to a half, and the option to reduce from 40 beds to 20 beds, all for painting, wall painting, shower for painting. We've come back behind that work, and we've done some additional work. When the work was completed back in the summer, staff from the detention center had removed some tile in the shower, I'll show you a picture of that in a minute, with some masks that have been left at the base of the wall, and state inspector wanted that to be removed, so that's an item that we have addressed in the past 30 days, and then we repainted the entire dorm perfectly above the benchboard. Here's some old photos, there's one of the moles, it's damaged around the back of the wall, one of the moles, and also some concerns about shower, shower plates, we spent some time addressing those, due to again, the direction provided by the fire department in search. Here's an after photo, I guess at this scale, we may not see a lot of difference between the full photo and the after photo, but if you could sit close enough, you can see that, again, we've now repainted the entire perimeter of the dorm, all the way around the 9 feet above benchboard, and then there's been some work done year-round, following the inmates and detention center staff, they completed back in the summer, I believe they used a latex tape, some latex paint, and that not adhered very well, so that's been removed and simply replaced. Here's some of that photo, again, that mole and wall I showed you earlier, removed plumbing wall, removed some soot from the wall, and a picture of us repainting the handrails, we've added some towel hangers that staff at the detention center has secured, inmates have placed a hanging towel, the two of those there. Mentioned the shower floors, you know, the mask along the bottom of the sunblock, and the state recommends that the dorm be decapulated for a good time, we've had to remove that, that was in the system, and cleaning the shower, moved it over to, we did that work. And we also, while over there, this, we want to get a return bin, we cleaned that and repainted that. We had the opportunity while the inmates were out, so we took that opportunity, we redo that while we were, while over there. Door two, similar scope of work, you know, had an asterisk by this picture, it's been taken back in summer, after the work done by the inmates. Again, indicative of the condition of all we've, we painted the dorm this past month. And then similar scope of work, really a little difference between door one and two, is for whatever reason, there was, there was some dust, empty, some of the upper walls, so we cleaned those walls from the area, painted all the way up to the ceiling, about 25 feet, that said, about 25 feet on top of it. Door three, again, similar scope, got some photos here, we did have some issues with some of the overhead lights in that, in the dorm, they replaced about 13 valves, the majority of those, they likely attempted to, to power surge in the dorm. We had a bit of scissors to lift, also hired an outside electrical contractor to assist our staff to replace those, and now they are all back in operation. Let's show a photo of the lights here, and shower plates, concerned about shower plates, and we've asked to remove the plates, replace all the clips, install all new fasteners, and then we block title, just to make it even more difficult for those fasteners to be removed. That was completed actually on all of the dorms. In other miscellaneous items, we're painting the bullpen, this is the bullpen between doors two and three, it's a pure area, it's not a dorm, you can see the photos right here, painting the wall and ceiling here, and also mixing the dorms, dorms to be replaced or installed, new guards of the smoke detectors, that tend to be an item that inmates have a lot of interest in, tends to provide a source of maintenance issues for, so we decided to take our people and replace it as well when we ran the door. In addition to the work in doors one, two, and three, we initiated or started work in the lockdown dorm, again, for the female dorm. As you may know, there are 18 segregation cells in the lockdown dorm, each of those cells are equipped with two bunks, so they provide a maximum occupancy of 36 inmates. And when the male inmates were first moved into the lockdown dorm, this thought, you can see the photo to the left, there was a sunblock wall, non-low barrier wall, and actually, inspection plans, this was not part of the original design, not sure exactly why they decided to do this at the time, but these particular cells have a steel facade, and then reinforced sunblock walls, and what you see is, this is between the cells, and this is the front of the cell, obviously the door is a steel facade, and there was a piece of angle iron used to attach the steel facades to the reinforced sunblock walls, and they had installed a stack of sunblock to basically protect that angle iron. Not exactly sure what that decision was made at the time, it was non-low barriers, the decision made to remove those from the cells, and actually they were located in 17 of 18 cells, when the process of removing those, then grinding the metal on the angle iron, sealing the seam between the angle iron and the sunblock wall with pick through grout, and then repainting that area. These are bunks, we had some bunks that were destroyed in the same dorm, we removed, repaired, and then installed those, and then I honestly did not know the last time, and maybe the picture of the staff could tell us. I hadn't wanted to tell you yet from the last time these cells had been repainted, and you can see there's a little bit of corrosion around some of the plumbing fixtures here, the ceiling wall, we repaired those areas and also repainted that. So again, we completed a complete repair, renovation, did not change out the picture, did not change out the plumbing picture, but removed the sunblock wall, we're in the process of removing that and painting the entire interior of each of those cells. Photo to share with you, this is intermediate after the block had been repaired, and they ran the angle iron, you can kind of see this white color here, that's a pick through grout that is installed. This is an after photo of another cell, that's been painted, had to repaint the entire interior, and an after photo around the plumbing picture. Basically, each cell had some, some amount of corrosion around these fixtures, that's cleaned and repainted. To date, we have completed work, I believe, in seven of the 18 dorms, 18 cells rather, two expected to be completed this week, and then there'll be nine remaining, and we're working with the detention center staff in the scada that work. It's just more after that repair and also repainting the walls. Another ongoing issue we have in the lockdown dorm is, from time to time, is certainly an ongoing issue for staff in the facility, is inmates will attempt to flood the dorm potentially in an effort to, to, well, either just act rebellion, I would say, or to an attempt to be removed from the cell. And this photo was actually taken last week when I was in the facility, inmate, he was not happy, he was there, it started to flood the dorm, and truss crews were in the, in the area trying to squeeze the water off the floor, after the detention staff had shut the water off to the end. And that's, that is, one of the work outlets have been completed since this past January, we're going into each of the plumbing changes, and it's going to cut off out of each sink above the hot tub or supply, so that work will occur once staff issue, they can access the plumbing change, cut the water off, and again, to keep that from becoming a more of an issue that it already did once identified. Outside of the work in the lockdown dorm, I mentioned also they have completed some isolation cells, these are all on the west side facility, just outside of doors four and five. These units, I believe, were constructed in the late 70s with the old equipment in there, and we could dome in and quickly repainted the interior in each of those dorms. There were some leakage concerns with the shower here, some of the attachments to the shower, we removed those, ground those down, we're going to repaint everything in the interior, walls, ceilings, bunks, desks, we did not have to repaint the floors, parable of the walls, it's been disshaved. This is just a photo here, not having the full photo, this is a photo after that work had been done. You can see the old head light here, turned off at the time, but as you were seeing this photo here, we've also replaced the lighting, or at least just one fixture on the ceiling in each of those two cells, with an upgraded LED light to improve lighting in the, in the cell, and also visibility for the officer, once these cells replaced back in service. We also replaced those same pass-through doors, I showed you a picture of it earlier, doors four and five, we replaced those in each of the isolation cells. In addition to the work with the isolation cells, again, I mentioned fencing, or the negative size yard outside of doors one, two, and three, and the lockdown dorm, certainly it's been a source of concern, dating back to the inmates escape back in 2019. This is the full photo here, taken that summer, certainly some of the continued recovery we received, showed pictures of that fencing in that area, and this is a photo being taken around that same time, this is the area where the inmates, the person, the inmates escaped, kicking the insect salad out here, and the small opening up here at the top, that, you know, that would be above, that was not an issue during the scada, but an item that was a concern for the inmates. We have since addressed that, and I shared these photos with you back in January, the shows, with the entire corolla of those, the recreational yard has been reinforced. So again, I really will count that whatever issues we have moving forward, this will not, this will not be one of them. But I'll remain concerned about the corners, particularly where the fence fabric overlapped in that previous picture that I've showed you. Within the last month, we've come back and we have reinforced those corners. There may be an item that the meeting that I had some interest in looking at, and basically this picture was taken earlier this year, and that has, that has been completely done. A piece of angle iron, three and a half inches, about three and a half inches, four inch thick, that they added to that area, that been welded at the bottom of the base plate that was installed back in the fall, secured to the vertical support with fastener, and then on the inside, the recreational yard, the fence fabric had been welded to that angle iron. We've got a picture, I'll show you here in a minute. In addition to that, where the fencing terminates, getting the makes are involved, we also reinforce that area, we've had a three inch line, four inch thick, down on a steel plate, and secured over the fastener to the vertical support, and then on the inside, welded the fabric to that plate, to further reinforce that interface. Here's a photo from inside the recreational yard, after that work was completed, visibility was not particularly good, but you can see the, you can see the edge of that angle iron, easier to see on the left than the right, but again, that's been added, that overlapped that seam in the fabric, and secured to the vertical support, welded at the bottom on the outside, and then the fabric itself had been welded to this angle iron, further reinforced that area. In addition to the work on the recreational yard, we've completed the work on the exterior doors of doors one, two, and three, that was a source of concern, again, the sheriff's offices, and the full photos, I believe, of doors one and two, you can see there was some... As you can see, there was some weather stripping around the door. There was a small area here, near the lock, that the sheriff's office was concerned about in each of those load patches. I shared this photo with you last month, dorm three, after some work had been done to reinforce that door around the front. You can see the work has been done here. Weather stripping, then a lube, and we did weld some steel around the south ring, and installed an additional guard around that area where the locking mechanism is on. All of the lock is welded inside the casing, just to further deter inmates from, from trying to, to compromise that lock. And since that time, we've come back and completed that work on all three doors. This is a photo of the door of dorm three, completely repainted and reinforced, and then to assist the officers in monitoring the status of that door. Particularly after hours and in a low light condition, we've added a reflective strip because of this side of the door. So it's easier for the, the guard to see if that door were to be open. And if they had a flashlight, a film in the front, if they shone that light, if the door was loaded, they should see that for blinking. That work has also been done. Other improvements that have been completed, in the nurses station, there is a cell to help inmates making medical attention. There have been some challenges with inmates, again, wanting to flood that cell. So we had installed some valves that would allow the staff to cut off the water to, to the cell should that become an issue. Again, I mentioned that electrical work they've done on the roof. This is a photo I shared with you last month. With exhaust fan over the kitchen, there was a conduit that had a break in here. Again, that work since been done. So again, there's a lot of work that's been done at the facility over the past 30 days and certainly over the past 60 days to address those issues that were raised during the December 10th inspection. You may recall last month, I mentioned that certainly aware, board, board had approved a contract with Johnson Controls for security enhancements at the detention facility. And we were waiting on approval from the state, which we mentioned received, I believe, in mid-December. Happy to report that contract was signed last week. Perks were had been issued. The vendor has, we have the process of ordering materials for that project. And it's my understanding that work could begin to add additional 55 cameras on. We may hold up on a few, again, particularly the older section of the jail. But work to begin on that project as early as the latter portion of March. One photo I was about to share with you, it provided some data to you last month regarding work orders at the detention facility, and we provide you an update there. You may recall around before last month, I indicated we had 44 outstanding work orders in the facility. At that time, 12 were on hold. Although, older portion of jail at 77 portion, which again, in the near term, we have had plans to repopulate, so those 12 on hold. And they continue to be on hold, but we've reduced that number of work orders from 44 to a current, at least after Friday at 8:00 PM, 26 work orders, 12 I mentioned are still on hold. There are seven that are in progress, even in-house with facility maintenance staff or have been contracted out from outside vendor. And then there are seven others that are in progress that had either had some level of involvement from the facility maintenance staff and, and the detention facility staff. I feel like we definitely moved in the right direction. Finally, you may recall the three items that I included in my report last month. And once we get past this current phase that we're in, renovation and repair at the facility, how to, to kind of stay on top of some of the issues and so prevent any recurrence best we can at jail is, I was at detention control. First was working with staff and jail administrator for a joint walkthrough, not just facility maintenance staff, not just detention staff, the both was working together, walk through the entire facility monthly. We have not, we have not started that yet, because I think I'm currently underway. We discussed that, we've met a couple of times. We'll be back with a checklist. And once I currently surprise aside, we will begin that process, you know, monthly process. Second item is test and inspect the smoke purge fans and the AC controls. And we have scheduled our first such inspection. We'll find out which was offered this week, actually, this Thursday. And finally, commission annual inspection of the smoke purge fan system. The current system we had was in half, was installed by Johnson Controls. My knowledge has not been inspected since it was opened. And I have contacted them and requested approval to begin the process of installing that system on an annual basis, so we can be sure if that's eventually going to be worked through. So with that said, that concludes my report. I'm glad to entertain the question that you may have.
Any questions from commissioners or personnel? Just Bill.
Yeah. Electroconduit wiring, I think you mentioned that on the roof, what about inside the facility?
I do not recall the item related to electrical conduit or wiring being cited in the report. I believe we did have an issue on the dissertation room, the inmates had pulled down some wiring for maybe the smoke detector, but that's been repaired. Issues cited in the reports were related to the exhaust fan, air handling unit, and other equipment on the roof of the jail. And that's been addressed.
Have there been an inspection that relates to plumbing that is inside the walls, checking the roof in case of leaks, a condition in which?
I will say with the, with the size of the facility, the amount of plumbing we have, you always have plumbing issues. And then we've got a population that's not particularly happy about their current environment. So that is an ongoing issue for us and one that we do our best to stay on top of.
Other comments?
I think the board would know that. Do we have any idea with the motor report, will we be coming in?
I do not. I actually have not received an update on that. That'd be coordinated through the maintenance office.
We are anxious.
I understand, Bill.
Okay, no, I didn't finish. Well, getting back to, what are they made out of?
I'm sorry?
The cops and bolts.
The bolts themselves are made out of steel.
Are bolts made out of steel?
Yes, sir.
And you don't use any cushions on that, right?
Those are provided by the detention facility, and they would be best equipped to respond to that particular question. That's not a facility management.
Are they fire protected?
Again, I would, I would want to defer to the sheriff's office to respond to that
All right, I'm good. Please.
I did have a question. You mentioned that y'all will work on getting a checklist done. Has work been started on that?
Yeah, we discussed, again, there's so much work going on right now. We've really kind of focused our energy there, because we were walkthrough, we'd likely cite the same issue that we already have been working on. But that's something that we'll be working on jointly. And I anticipate the next, maybe not next 30 days, the next 60 days, once the majority of this, the current effort is behind us, that we will start that. We will start the inspection, we will have it prepared, and we'll work on that together.
I feel like that, you know, there's so much work that's been done, and with comes the call, I think that inspection, I just don't want to sit here and go after it.
Other comments? Mr. Boo, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for your efforts on this island the last 90 days, particularly, your staff, if you know, I go through each inspection with you and your staff, amazing job down there, quite frankly, all facilities. And if all of you mind, I'd like to give you some staff that they can go forward with this. I appreciate, I appreciate your vote. As a total board, in an email in the week, I didn't expect to have Mr. Lewis from the Health and Human Services, who was standing off till I hear this morning to get an update from the state, at what he saw on the 24th of January, when he came. I did get an email from him that I think I forwarded to the board, yet that, and did I forward it to him, and I figured he had the flu and would not be here this morning, looking for me here. Next month, when we did this report again, and I'm real sorry to hear that, because I think he was brought up a positive report as it related to the facility, because at the time he was here only 24. I think we really have made him, quite frankly, had him leave. Numerous very positive comments here that, and the act is itself, I think really didn't expect for a place to look as good as what he found at that. Now, that's areas we've worked in, the linear part or the old part of jail, which is where you see the majority of the pictures on, on the new reports, we have not worked on yet. We do intend to do some preliminary work once we finish this in the old juvenile section and partly in the east and west section, which we've already replaced all the plumbing in just a couple of years ago. So we have two other areas. But primarily in the old linear section, we had decided we would wait to get the most reported back to see where they were going to have a head before we spent a lot of money in that section. And so that's kind of where we have, that's part of the, most of the report, but my understanding is that we will have a report, it's out of order this month. Out of order this month means for some, generally, it will be the last day of the month. Somewhere this year, down last week, we certainly think that we'll have a report. But any other questions on the facilities at this time? All right, I appreciate, again, Mr. Boo, your report this morning. Moving on to the next section, which is item seven. I have not seen Al Wilson in, who is going to lead this report? You, okay. Please come over here, Mr., anything Mr. Wilson last week when I texted, but it's, it might have, we had you this morning, and we would now be looking for a report on the operations out of that. I think we've covered facilities very well. And this was a two-part issue that we had in the jail part of the facilities that Mr. Boo discovered. The other part was operations, which all of us, Sheriff, Hervey, and his employees and things that happened too, ladies here, just wanted to make that report. And it kind of hinges now on repopulating the number of volumes we have there, and what Mr. Lewis says, and he knows she was with us that Friday several times, that it was really based on bringing inmates back. I think we'll approve, we are approving now somewhere between 150 and 60, I think, in there. We're right around 100 right now that we've got in there. But it was dependent on the staff levels that we have, I hope you're all about that this morning. But well, I'll be quiet and let y'all talk.
Thank you, thank you, each of you. My name is Misty Strickland, I'm a major with Nash County Sheriff's Office. And Mr. Boo, I want to say thank you to the county for all the work that has been done in the facility. We really do appreciate it. So hopefully, we'll continue this partnership together. As I will be going over operations side of the house. And as we all know, operating a jail is a complex and difficult undertaking in the best of circumstances. There are many areas of concern, and it can be difficult to prioritize, as most everything involved in a jail can be directly linked to life endangerment issues for staff, inmates, vendors, visitors, and contractors. As such, it is critical to our mission to be efficient, safe, resourceful, and statutorily compliant, as feasible. We have been working very hard within the confines of what we have to make improvements as well as advancements. The areas that we are going to discuss today will be the following bullets. Operations is working diligently right now with maintenance to accommodate the number of outside contractors working in the detention facility. Additional training has been provided for current officers as well as our new officers. Due to the operational design and flow of the current facility, we have implemented improved arrangements for our booking and our intake areas for a safer processing. Two independent reviews, as we discussed last month, was going to take place this month, within the last 30 days, and that has been conducted. A proposed direct supervision organizational chart is included in this briefing to enhance our detention transports and mental health transports, and combine them together for better compliance with the state's new mandated law. This model will be effective and efficient by making the detention center into a detention division with its own much needed command staff. The first bullet, operations, again, we're working with a lot of outside contractors. We are having a large amount of contractors working in the facility, as opposed to the safety issue. So we are, to ensure safety, we have assigned officers to be with all contractors at all times. So that pulls away from our manpower. Additional training, the second bullet, has been provided for new officers, as well as providing refresher training for all officers to improve their skill set. Officers already have mandated yearly training. However, we have incorporated several specialized training classes. Due to the sensitive nature of training, as well as policy and procedures inside the detention facility, we are unable to go into detail in a public forum defining the specifics of all procedures and training. Inmate operations falls under safety issues. If you would like to have a more in-depth understanding, the sheriff has, of our operational procedures, the sheriff has invited each of you to observe the operational procedures by shadowing any of our officers on any shift for 12 hours or less. You are more than welcome at any time. Since we have decreased our inmate population and have taken the linear section, the older section offline, this would be a safer time at this time to come in and observe our operational procedures. This also will get any questions that you have answered by our detention officers. It will give you a better insight to the daily operations. Due to the operational design and flow, sometimes that gets missed in operations. The facility also is a direct link to the operational design and flow and the operations of the current facility. We have implemented improved arrangements for our booking and intake areas for safer processing. The operational design flow from the current magistrate's office to our booking area is an officer safety issue. We've all discussed it. We have implemented safety precautions to address these issues, as well as booking procedures and issues. Most agencies have a magistrate's office and a booking area within the confines of a safe and secure facility, so the officer does not have to go back outside of the detention facility with an inmate that's already been in front of the magistrate. We are working to ensure safety for all. Like we said in last month's briefing, we were going to have one independent review. We've had two from two different well-respected agencies. We stated that we're going to have total access to our facility and all operation policies and procedures. The command staff did not get involved in this. I've not been in the facility helping with this. The other major, Major Brake, has not been in the facility to give any input to this process. We have stayed out of it. They had access to the whole facility with all policies and procedures. And it was without, it was unbiased. A proposed direct supervision organizational chart is included in this briefing to enhance our detention transports and mental health transports, and combine them together for better compliance with the state's new mandated law that can affect in October. As the proposed staffing chart will show, this design will aid in making the current detention center into a standalone detention division. And that's what we are in the process of looking for. And if you look up here, this is our current staffing levels for the operations side of the detention facility. You have a captain, a lieutenant, impact, and two transport officers. You have maintenance and commissary. You have platoons one, two, three, and four. The current vacancy that's up today was 10, and with one getting ready to start. So I think we've really improved with the hiring process. We're just going to go over some of my duties, and this is just some of them. There's added things such as the budget that me and the other major, we help with. But this is just my responsibilities. And if you see the highlighted in red, that's what I'm involved in on a daily basis. We're implementing are you okay program. The are you okay program, that's where we have officers calling senior citizens daily to make sure that they're okay. They really like that. We're in the process of being CALIA certified. That's the commission, it's a national accreditation for law enforcement agencies. I'll go into more detail on that. That's the Commission on, it's a national accreditation for law enforcement agencies. I'll go into more detail on that. Coalition for Addiction Recovery and Education, I'm responsible for the detention facility under my task. And then I'm also responsible for the Task Force Officers, DEA, FBI, and the Drug Task Force on a daily basis. I'm in charge of the Governor's Highway Safety Program. I'm in charge of the Intelligence Unit. I'm in charge of the K-9 Unit. I'm in charge of the whole Napocod Division. I've gone through the Nash County Recovery Center meetings. I'm in charge of the whole patrol division. I'm also in charge of the reserve officer side of the house. And I'm also in charge of the Special Response Team, the SRT. That falls all under my guidelines. Major Brake, who I'm very thankful for, him and I have a very good relationship. And with all these responsibilities, we tend to help each other out a whole lot. So he's had his hands in the detention facility this last year tremendously. He is in charge, again, everything in red is what he has his hands in on a daily basis. The Civil Court Division, the civilian staff, the Community Watch Program, the Criminal Court Division, the whole Criminal Investigative Division, the DARE program, the Honor Guard, the Internal Affairs Division, the logistics, that's all equipment that entails a whole lot. That could be a standalone division. Nash County Collaborative Trillion, he's in charge of all the school resource officers. And as you know, the schools are real big with their school resource officers. And we have a really good relationship throughout the county. He's in charge of our Special Victims Unit, which covers all special crimes, sexual assaults, and domestic. He's in charge of the training. What we are proposing is to put a major over the detention facility with that being its only duties. The captain will fall under that major. We will add an administrative lieutenant. And under the administrative lieutenant, we will put the commissary corporal, the impact, the maintenance, and a transport team, adding three more transport officers. These are the positions that are being requested in yellow. So you'll have two lieutenants, one overseeing the administrative side and one overseeing the operations side, which is platoon one, two, three, and four. Again, this is our responsibility, and we're going to break, that major will be over. Major of the detention facility is what we're trying to get, will have their own job description. And if you turn, this major will be responsible for overseeing all aspects of the detention facility. That will be their only division, and they will oversee it. They will oversee the two eighty CG program, the impact program. They will oversee the division and process. They will oversee the classification process. They'll be in charge of the jail and mental health transport coordinators, the liaison between the detention and the county commissioners, the liaison between the detention and Department of Human Services, Human and Health Services, the liaison between the detention and Director of Utilities and Facilities, the liaison between detention and the Health Department and Fire Marshal, the liaison between the detention and healthcare providers. That will be what the major will be responsible for. Here are the reasons for the proposed staffing levels in addition to transport, the addition of transport officers. Most agencies have a transport team. We do not require a patrol. Mental health transports has increased and is putting huge strain on our patrol operations daily. We are not in compliance with our IBC transports because we are not meeting the state mandated six-hour time requirement. We have, however, partnered with National Mental Health Care, but they only transport the first three transports of each month. That's it, three transports. Then we're responsible for the rest. Those three transports could happen the first day of the month. Other reasons for the proposed staffing levels. We have not had an increase in command staff for the detention facility. I've been here twenty-two years, and we have never had an increase in the command side of the house. We need an officer to handle grievances from all inspections. An officer handles grievances, one officer. We need a classification officer. At this time, we have no way to classify. We classify male and female. That is it. The facility that we have, we do not have the luxury of classifying. And our supervisors are overtasked in the detention facility. They just have too many things to do. The operational design and flow of the current detention center requires more manpower, more manpower than a new up-to-date facility would require. So this is causing continuous strain on all levels. Again, just for review, that's what we're proposing. Our goals of the detention office are actually, we want the detention division goals, dual certification for all officers. We want all new officers to become detention certified. New officers will work in the detention facility for a period of time, and then they will go to BLET and become law enforcement certified. That will give us two manpower areas to pull from. We are working with Nash County College to have a ninth detention force. That's in the process now. We're going to continue specialized training for all of our detention officers. Training toward implementing, this is what we're training toward implementing, a PERC team, which is a psychiatric emergency response team, so they're in-house. The Nash County Sheriff's Office is becoming COLIA certified, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And that's going to, that's really big for our agency. I think there's only, last camp was seven in North Carolina. So this will reflect really well when Nash County will be COLIA certified. County more have worked diligently to keep us on the three-year timeline, and we are on schedule to finish early, and that's a huge undertaking. We would like detention to follow suit, which will be extremely difficult with our current operational facility inflow. However, we want to operate in a manner, once the facility is up to standard, to be able to comply with the detention side of the accreditation, which is CAC, Commission on Accreditation. And we discussed this before, the facility itself falls under the scope of the county. Safety and security is the sheriff's responsibility. And until the sheriff feels the facility is a more safe environment for his employees as well as the community and the inmates, the number of inmates being housed will continue to be at a reduced rate. The sheriff will determine the maximum amount of inmates we will have and what sections of the facility we will utilize. All this is dependent upon safety concerns and the current facility design as well as facility maintenance issues. Where we go from here, west side, which has been discussed earlier, which is our older bar linear section of the jail, that will remain closed. We are still in need of lockdown pods. We do not have any more lockdown cells than we did prior to moving inmates out. It is still a huge safety issue. There is still a need for more secure areas so we can classify. Classification is huge. We need to be able to classify these inmates when they come in. We need an area for weekenders to be housed separately. We cannot house weekenders with our regular inmates. We need to be able to lock down violent offenders. We all see the news, this year has already started, started very violently. Several students, we house those inmates. Right now, we have beds for thirty-six inmates. However, that's not a true number because we only have eighteen cells, actual cells. So when we try to utilize two per cell, but sometimes we can't do that due to the violent nature of the inmate or due to mental health issues. Sometimes, usually it's only one per cell. The inmate workers need to be separate from other inmates. What you have is other inmates trying to get these inmate workers to bring things back. And we search them, but it's just, you need to house the inmates, inmate workers separately. Again, violent offenders need to be housed separately from low-level offenders. We don't have, we're not able to do that. We need an area for mental health evaluation. The elderly as well as inmates with medical conditions needs to be housed separately. We need an area for two-side watch. We do not currently have that. Having this in place will ensure we are compliant, state and federally, and will also significantly reduce the medical bills for assault-related incidents. It truly is our hope to work with each of you to do what is best for the county, whether that is to build a new facility or remodel this current facility while addressing all of our current safety needs. We want to be good source of accounting money. If it will be cheaper to build, then let us build and not put mandates on life safety issues. Our desire is to ensure we are providing the most safety-conscious environment for our detention officers. That's our number one priority. Our goal is to not only keep our officers safe, but also keep the community safe as well as the inmates. Say, build a modern facility that is state and federally compliant and one will then meet the standards of future growth. Mr. Davis talked earlier about how much Nash County is growing with that crime rate coming. We want to have a facility that, right now, we're grandfathering in a lot of sections, so the bare minimum nineteen seventy-seven code is what we have. We want two thousand and twenty code, up to date to that. We want to have a facility that Nash County can be proud of. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That should be issue nationwide.
Yes, sir.
And do you, how you house the ones that have little problems at this point?
General population.
Yeah, even the general population?
Unless we have a, we're trying to utilize our only secure area, which is the old female side. But again, it's thirty-six beds with only eighteen cells.
How long do you keep before they get transported?
We try to get mental health issues out as quickly as possible, but we don't have any control over that. We try to do what we can on our side.
And you talk about officers' safety.
Yes, sir.
Are you training them? So on safety issues?
Yes, sir. It's ongoing training.
So that they don't expose themselves in a way where it could be easy for it to be unsafe?
Yes, sir. We train daily. I mean, the environment itself is unsafe. It's a detention facility. But we do the best with what we have.
You mentioned now, just that.
Yes, sir.
Especially your supervisor overtasked. Is that because of a shortage of staff?
There are job description, actually, throughout the years, they've added things to the supervisor level. What we're trying to do is split it up more. We have more transports. We were just tasked out a whole lot more just because of the increase of criminal activity and inmates.
You mentioned weekend.
Weekends.
Should be here.
Yes, sir.
How do you describe weekend? Maybe it's?
They come on Friday and they start the weekend, but they come from outside and come into our facility, and we don't have anywhere to house them separately. So they're mixed in with population, and they can suitcase a lot of stuff in. We don't have the ability to check.
You're talking about minor infractions?
No, sir. We're investigating.
Talking about the weekend you described.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Ones that mind infractions.
Yes, sir. The judge has ordered them for weekends. It's their other sentence. So they come into our facility.
Sentence that's a weekend.
Yes, sir, until they're finished, and then they come into general population.
Suicide. Is that a problem in the judiciary?
Yes, sir. They're in a facility they don't want to be in. If they have mental health issues combined within confined, it tends to trigger them. So, you know, we have issues with that.
But all these areas you work in?
Yes, sir, definitely. And with a partnership with you all, we hope to continue. I think we're going to do the right thing for Nash County.
Other commissioners down quick? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here at this point.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll call back later this time. When we finish up item number seven on the agenda, we'll be moving to item number eight, which is public comment. This is the time in which anyone that's here today, which should speak to commissioners about items that's not on the agenda. And we do have numerous public hearings that will come after this. If you wish to speak up in a public hearing, we ask that you let that comes up on the agenda. But on the public comment, if it's items that's not on the agenda, we'd be glad to hear from anyone. We do have a time period prior to the meeting and after the meeting starts. And I had two people sign up this morning. And we do ask that you address the commission as a whole, not single out individuals and not single out any of our administrators. And that would be former administrator or legislative official or the ones that are currently in place at this time. But that said, the first person that I had, if you can come up and state your name and your address for the record, it would be Donald Strickland from Lexington, Carolina. Donald, you here this morning?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good to have you here, sir.
Well, we almost can't say this morning, this morning's lunch.
Get that way quick. And I didn't say it, but you have about a five-minute time, Mr. Sir.
Okay. All right. Well, no, through this whole deal this year, it's a conversation.
Ask the name and address.
Donald Strickland, I live right, we're all fishing for it, buddy.
Okay. Thank you.
But, you know, I sit back and kind of look at this thing, and, you know, it's kind of like a conflict. You know, with the school, the jail, whatever it is, you know, I just think it would work a whole lot better if you would get a more personal working relationship with the manager of these facilities, whether it's the school or jail. Where is that? The facility, look, they're trained professionals. They know what they're doing with this stuff. Trust them. Have confidence in them. You know, and I think a lot of times, I noticed a email, you know, a couple weeks back, you know, I've come and said, there'll be a new jail here. You know, you can't make that decision that quick. Criminal activity has changed in present day, not nineteen seventy in it. You have the best sheriff department in Nash County, probably in North Carolina. Show some appreciation for them. And guys, you gotta work your tails off. They work this interstate, they do people off this interstate that are not from here. There's some dangers in the book. And when it comes to a detention center, I worked in a detention center before. Officer safety is number one, and when it comes to safety, money's not an option. You make sure that man, if you go back home to his family, he makes sure he's safe in the world. That's the main thing. I mean, this jail right here, it may work about them, but, you know, it's not right to put somebody with a Muslim or a fence beside somebody who's committed four murders. They're going to open, open, uh, door and sit. That's not, that's not the way to do things. What you're doing is breeding criminal activity. That's what you're doing. It's not fair. I mean, I haven't got a lot of your family members to be sitting in my head. You know, none of us are a puzzle law. All of us come out of the jail. But look, just one simple thing, you see, you're in jail. I wouldn't want to be sitting beside some of these people. Some of these people are dangerous. That's why they take that flash, they're sharpening up and trying to make shanks and stuff out of it. I noticed before also, you know, there's comparisons there between jail and, you know, someone managing the phone system. There's no comparison. managing a foreign suit, there's no comparison to that. It's minimal. It's nobody trying to kid you in a foreign suit, playing. You know, I've never seen, you got sailing bags, so if you don't have people trying to make shanks, it's just, it just really bothers me, it's cause, it just seems like somebody, I was trying to pull a plane back, the sheriff, Peter, and Captain Wilson, we've both, we've had a fruitful and professional working relationship for a long time. I've known them a long time, they're good people. They're not going to screw you wrong. Trust them. I have faith in them. It's just, these are officers I noticed last time, Captain Wilson, he did a perfect presentation, I thought. I mean, common sense would tell you, if you wouldn't go surrounding out there, hey, it's not a safe working environment to work in. I mean, paint doesn't fix everything. You can paint all the rust, that's fine, but it doesn't fix the main issue. The main issue is eventually, you're going to have to have a detention center. I mean, when I worked, I worked one in this county, six people operated, and we get provided a safe working environment, everything's managed, which that, you know, that kind of mind of people that's going to be tied up having to run the thing. You know, there's all different ways to look at it, but I noticed, you know, it really disturbed me last meeting after Captain Wilson got here, the comment, you know, looking out, I mean, when he come back, that just totally, that was just.
Sir, I did ask you not to refer to commissioners, expect to the hopeful, if you could.
Well, expected, but I mean, the thing is, I mean, y'all directed towards him, so I'm just directing it back. That was just rude and uncalled for. Captain Wilson is just the final fellow you want to find. He's honest, he's got a lot of integrity, he's got a lot of experience, he's over 30 years of law enforcement. He's the man you're going to call when somebody breaks in your house, he's going to help you. So don't try to down on him in front of the people of Nash County. And on that, the top of that, I feel he's opened the policy from the person who did that before the board and before the people of Nash County. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. The other person I had that had signed up is Pat Portis.
Good morning. Patrick Portis, 4722, Moire Way, Nashville, North Carolina. After listening to the presentations this morning, I did want to take just a brief moment to commend the sheriff's office for their progress in the CALIA certification accreditation. Having gone through that process, it's exhaustive, takes a great deal of man-hours, and it provides an up from the bottom to the top review of all policies and procedures and the operating procedures of a law enforcement agency, and gives them recommendations of best practices that are recognized across the nation. I realize, and when that happens, it does take a great deal of time and effort, so don't, just personally for having gone through that, I want to commend the sheriff's office, and it will certainly be a great benefit to the county for multiple reasons, you know, lower insurance rates and other things. Since July, the sheriff's office has already paid out over $200,000 to other counties to house inmates. The total cost of this debacle just keeps going up. We still have approximately 130 inmates outside of Nash County, average about $50 a day, that's $6,500 a day, $195,000 a month. The question I have is if the facility failed the inspection and required the sheriff's office and the county to move these inmates. I ask, why does the sheriff's office' budget have to be penalized? We're told that the sheriff's 2020 budget may suffer because of this. My question's why? You know, because when his budget suffers, the services that the sheriff provides to the citizens will suffer. The citizens are whom will ultimately suffer. We just learned there's $27 million in the emergency fund, the rainy day fund, the contingency fund. To me, the situation with detention facility is a disaster. Therefore, why can't we use this $27 million to help supplement or provide to cover the cost, if it's legally permissible, to cover the cost for this out-of-county detention service instead of directly taking that money out of the sheriff's budget? To me, that's a good need, a good purpose for that fund. We've discussed, and I've heard a conversation about the federal inmates. I've learned that local counties house federal inmates and have reoccurring budget money, reoccurring money that goes back to the county. Some of the larger counties, the amount of money is stacked, how much they let every year housing these federal inmates. Then this rider truck that sits out there, we know it's been out there since November, costs $900 a week, that's $3,600 a month. All the while, it's explained that we're utilizing that rider truck, that refrigerated truck out there while we're waiting to get the information needed on what our cold storage needs are. There's folks out here right now that I promise you have the ability to tell you what the cold storage needs of that detention facility are. They've been doing it for years, but we're told that we're going to wait while a pay consultant makes up recommendations so the cash register keeps going, and I promise you there are folks actually probably in the audience that are more than capable of telling you for free what the cold storage needs are of the detention facility. I would listen to comments about the sheriff's operation of the detention facility. Knowing that the facility was ordered shut down, we should applaud the sheriff and the sheriff's office for the job they did, awaiting on action for an imperative problem, we should applaud them for the job they've done in keeping the citizens safe and trying to manage that chaos within that facility. I know the sheriff's statement, it's been discussed here and other places, has voiced his concerns about that detention facility since he was first away. Last month, Captain Wilson stood up here and did a presentation, and afterwards, in my opinion, the certain folks took a turn to criticize Captain Wilson's presentation. And my question about how you develop an operational plan or a staffing plan, when the very building, the very detention center you were planning for?
Of course, you have 340.
All right, well, then I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll close with one. Lord Von Mises, he was an Austrian economist, said, "There is no more dangerous menace to civilization than a government of incompetent, corrupt,..." Or about a minute. Thank you.
We'll now move on to item number nine, which is need incorporated community services block rate, and I will leave it all on the UDL block if we make that closing statement.